This meeting is now called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman? Mr. Taylor? Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, two absent. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move to excuse the absent council members.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council members Taylor and Corman be excused. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So, as you can guess, council, we have a special presentation tonight. They're not looking for somebody. That's not why we have the canine out and everybody here. This is great. We have promotions and we have special recognition. Before, while Chief Milosevic is coming up, pardon me, I just wanted to mention to family members, please feel free to come up here to the front, come up here to the back, anywhere you want to take pictures while it's going on, you're absolutely welcome. So, Chief.
Thank you very much. Mayor Law, Council President Prince, members of the council and the viewing audience, thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening. To recognize several members of the department, I will begin with recognizing three members of the department who were recently promoted. I will follow that with introducing our two newest canine officers. There's a reason the dogs are on the separate ends of the viewing audience tonight. They, while they're very friendly, they do want to be a little bit of aggressive towards each other, so there's a reason we're keeping the two dogs apart. Then, following that, we'll conclude with recognizing several members of the department for their efforts during this past year. So first, I'd ask that Sergeant Channeler Swain come forward. Sergeant Swain was promoted to his current position on May 16th. He has over 14 years of law enforcement experience. He began his law enforcement career with the Washoe County Nevada Sheriff's Office in January of 2000. He's been a member of the Renton Police Department since April of 2002. During his tenure with the department, he has spent time in patrol, bicycle patrol, narcotics, and is a member of Valley SWAT. For the last two years, he's been a field training officer in patrol, helping to train and prepare our newest officers. Currently, he's temporarily assigned to one of our night shifts because we have a sergeant who's on disability. Sergeant Swain is an outstanding leader, one who is known for his professionalism. He has shown the ability to maintain a calm demeanor during stressful situations, and that's what you need in a sergeant on graveyard. So, congratulations. Thank you. Commander Kevin Keyes was promoted effective May 16th. He has over 19 years of law enforcement experience. He began his law enforcement experience with the Kirkland Police Department in 1996. He joined the Renton Police Department in January of 2000. As an officer, he's spent time in both patrol, narcotics, and in investigations. He was promoted to sergeant in 2012. As a sergeant, he has been assigned to patrol and, most recently, to patrol services. During the last several months, he's been very active with pre-employment background investigations on trying to hire our officers that we currently have some vacancies in. Commander Keyes is assigned to patrol operations, where he will work with Commander Schulte to oversee our largest division in the department. This is the division that has the greatest impact and the greatest personal contact with our citizens. Commander Keyes' reputation, has a reputation as a respected leader, will serve him well in this new assignment. This reputation is a result of a history of providing outstanding leadership and being a positive motivator wherever he's been assigned in the department. So, congratulations. Commander Mike Luther. Hey, get a little bit of the dogs talking back. Was it WC Fields says never follow what an animal act or a child's act? Commander Luther was promoted effective June 1st of this year. He has over 31 years of law enforcement experience. He began his law enforcement career with the Clark County Sheriff's Office in 1984. He has been a member of the Renton Police Department since 1990. As an officer, Mike has spent time in both patrol and investigations. He was promoted to sergeant in 1996. As a sergeant, he has spent time in patrol, patrol services, and in investigations. During the Benson Hill annexation, Mike played a crucial role as the FTO coordinator as we quickly hired about 25 officers. He was responsible for tracking the 25 new hires through the FTO process so it comes to a successful conclusion. As a sergeant, he was instrumental in developing our Valley investigative team that investigates officer-involved shootings throughout South King County. He initiated the concept, worked with the other sergeants and the commanders in the Valley, to the point now we have a very competent, independent team that can go out and investigate incidents of officer-involved shooting. Commander Luther will be assigned to investigations. He is known for his steady approach as a leader. His years of experience as a detective and detective sergeant will serve him well in this new role as the detective commander. He is respected both locally and regionally for his investigative skills. Congratulations. Being a canine officer is a very significant commitment. This is a commitment to both training and being responsible for the actions of your canine partner. If you ask any canine officer or former canine officer, they will tell you it is the best job on the department. During the past year, the council, with the council's approval, we expanded our canine program to add a third dog. And with the recent retirement of Officer Cassidy State's dog, Fedor, we have selected two new canine handlers and dogs. I am proud to introduce our two newest canine officers, Officer Dave Adam and his partner Zev, and Officer Kevin Lane and his partner Odin. Maybe it... Officer Dave Adam has been with the Renton Police Department since 1995. And Zev is a two-year-old German shepherd that we acquired from Germany. Officer Lane has been with the department since 2007, and his partner Odin is a one-year-old German shepherd from the United States that received its initial training from Officer Jason Trader. Both earlier this year, both these officers and their partners completed 400 hours of training through Pierce County, and they completed the training, passed their certification, and now they're active out on our streets today. And now with this third dog, the other canine officer, Officer Chris Greenway and his partner Titan, will be working day shift about half the time. And so now we have two dogs at night and one dog during the day, and so we have an opportunity to be a little more active out there, maybe a little more successful on tracking. So, congratulations. Thanks.
Okay, we can leave.
Maybe we need to have them ride together for a couple of shifts.
He was growing the third dog. It would really be interesting. I'd ask that Officer Dave Adam come forward. The department has a formal process for employee recognition. Our general orders define the conditions under which the department's meritorious medal can be awarded. This medal will be awarded when there is sufficient evidence of outstanding performance of duty on a single occasion or meritorious performance over a period of time, notwithstanding any consideration of the member's physical safety. Officer Adam was assigned to Valley SWAT in May of 2000. He served just under 15 years before he elected to resign his position on Valley SWAT to accept his position as a current canine handler. Dave was an assistant team leader and eventually was chosen as a team leader. He was a trained instructor in a wide variety of areas, primarily dealing with breaching, which is the police term for opening up locked doors, for obvious reasons. That job never goes to the smaller person. Get typecasted sometimes. During his tenure, he responded to hundreds of callouts and other critical incidents without, throughout South King County. And over the last 15 years, he's evaluated by multiple supervisors as outstanding in several categories, including teamwork, decision-making, tactical and technical knowledge, and dependability. I know, you know, when you're on SWAT, you know, the phone can ring at all hours of the day, and so I know his wife was probably glad he's off SWAT because the phone doesn't ring, but now being a canine officer, he's back on to hearing the phone ring. And his day's off. Usually more during the day since he works at night. So, Dave, I have to personally thank you for your substantial commitment to Valley SWAT and recognize your years of commitment by awarding you the department's meritorious service.
That's great.
Last but not least, Officer Yulenick come forward.
As you recall, last summer, we recognized both Officer Rob Yulenick and Officer Sean Tierney for their actions at the Regency Woods apartment complex. Because of their actions at that fire, results of their public recognition, Officer Sean Tierney was selected as the American Legion Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for the state of Washington. And Officer Rob Yulenick was selected to receive his humanitarian and life-saving award. These two awards will be presented at the American Legion Conference in Spokane in July. Last week, actually it was on the 5th, Officer Yulenick received the Veterans of Foreign War Law Enforcement of the Year, Law Enforcement Officer of the Year for the state of Washington at their annual convention in Yakima. So, it's quite an honor for two members of our department to win both of those Officers of the Years from those two organizations. I'd just like to congratulate both those officers. Officer Tierney couldn't make it this evening, but it's an opportunity to show an example of the outstanding work that officers do and being recognized on a statewide by those two organizations. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Rob.
That is tonight's presentation. We do have a little reception across the hall. If you're welcome to join. If not, we'll see you after the council.
Thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations, everybody, both on the promotions and the new positions and especially these special honors. Rob and Sean, great work, and, you know, we're really proud of the work you've done. So, thank you very much. Jim, I can't tell you how tempted I am to put us in recess instead of going to a public hearing, but we won't do that to you. So, we're going to segue into a public hearing.
Wrong one. Turn back. Yep, yeah, just one sec.
Well, maybe we can go on to and come back.
Here we go. Okay. For the record, I'm Jim Sykes, Cities Transportation Planning and Programming Manager, and I'll be giving the staff presentation for the 2016 to 2021 Transportation Improvement Program, commonly called the TIP. The purpose of the STIP is multi-fold. It's mandated by the state law to annually adopt our six-year transportation improvement plan, and just like the comprehensive plan that you heard about earlier tonight, it's required to have in place for state and federal funding of our programs and projects. Most importantly, though, are the next three bullets, which really, the TIP annual update is about getting stakeholder input, both internal and external stakeholder input, and of course, to check in with the council to make sure that the plans and the programs we have in place meet the priorities of the city's future growth, business needs, and safety needs. The plan provides a multi-year plan. We do a lot of scheduling, programming of the projects. As you'll see later, the projects in the first couple of years are mainly funded, schedules are fairly firm. As we get out later into the TIP, the projects are very uncertain to when they will occur or when they will get programmed, or get funded, I should say. Finally, I'll mention that we do, after we've adopted it, send it to all of our adjacent jurisdictions, private and public utilities, to make sure that we're coordinating our projects with their future projects. And finally, the TIP is a financially unconstrained document, so you will see a lot more need within this plan than we have funding for at this time. The TIP also supports the comprehensive plan, which you heard about tonight, the city's business plan, and is supportive of the Growth Management Act. What is in the TIP? This year, we have 38 programs and projects within the TIP. Most of those are corridor projects. We do have preservation projects, non-motorized projects, a couple of safety programs, and we have some miscellaneous programs, such as the 1% for the arts, and some programs such as project development and pre-design, which mainly staffs work before it gets to the design level, getting things ready for grant applications and doing pre-design work. I think this year, we only have one new corridor project. We've added the last phase of Rainier. As you know, we finished the phase now, and we're moving on to the next phase to the north that'll bring it up to the new training center on Rainier, and then the final phase will be from that training center to the north city limit. So, we've added that to the TIP this year. Projects that we have under design, we have nine projects, so this will take a couple of slides to get through. Rainier Avenue, the Phase Four, from Third to North Third Place is where the new training center will be, is under design now. It'll take probably a year-long process, along with the Northeast Sunset Boulevard Corridor are both under design and should take at least a year to finish the design. Those are only funded for design at this time. We'll be seeking right-of-way and construction funding in the future for those two projects. Sunset Lane is 30% design complete on that, and we're moving towards final design, hoping to finish that by the end of the year and then go to construction following that, pending the funding for construction. Duval Preservation, that is under design currently and could potentially go out to bid later this year, or at least by next year, we'll be under construction with that project. One 16th pedestrian improvements is in the same situation, we're under design this year with the improvements plan to be constructed next year. Lake Washington Loop Trail, we've fully funded design of the trail around the perimeter of the airport. We do have some right-of-way funding also for purchasing the one piece of property that we need for the trail, and we still need construction money for that. We do have two projects that we recently received grants for, the Northeast 31st Street Bridge Replacement and the Northeast 27th Place Culvert Scour Repair Projects. These are smaller but important projects for our bridge program, and those are fully funded. In fact, I think the city's only has less than 10% in those projects. It's mainly grant-funded. And one of the projects that doesn't stand out, you don't see a lot of physical improvements, will be the north or southwest 43rd Car Road Petrovitsky Adaptive System, Adaptive System Control System, which is mainly work that'll happen in the cabinets to better synchronize the signals along that corridor and improve traffic flow. Just a little bit about the highlights for this year. We will be having some projects going to construction. We hope to be out to bid on Logan Avenue within a week or potentially next week, and out to construction following that. Seventh and Shattuck, we have already selected a, went out to bid and have a contractor ready to go, doing some final paperwork, but we should be breaking ground fairly soon on that project. This is a signal project that'll allow buses to go out to the north of the parking ride there versus right now that most of the buses have to go out to the south and delay some of the routes. Of course, the project downtown is the Main Avenue South Downtown Circulation Project. We received TIB funding for this, so it's fully funded now. We're finishing up design and hope to go to bid this fall for that project with construction to follow, but we'll have to coordinate very closely with the Logan Avenue projects because we don't want to have the detour going on when we're under construction for this project. So, we're closely coordinating those two construction phases. One project that we finished up this year was the Highlands to Boeing slash Landing Pedestrian Connection. This is, was a very important pedestrian project that provided the first pedestrian access over 405 or under 405. Previously, before I-405 went through there, there was pedestrian connections, but once 405 went through, it severed all the pedestrian connections. This is the first time, starting to begin this year, that we've made that connection again to have a safe pedestrian passage through that corridor. Some of the smaller projects, signal products, but are very important for pedestrians are HAWC signals, which is a fancy word for basically pedestrian signal. We've installed one at Fourth and approximately Queen Avenue, and we hope to have the Duval Avenue Northeast HAWC signal going within this week or, I'm hearing, within hours potentially. So, hopefully by tomorrow, it'll be up, but sometime at least this week, it should be up and going.
You do know school's out on Friday.
Right. One of those other projects that kind of goes under the radar screen, but is very important as far as efficiency of our system, is the LED streetlight conversion. Most of that has been done now for all of our city-owned streetlights, and we're really starting to reap some of the benefits of the efficiencies. I'm hearing estimates of, you know, over half million dollar savings in our light bill as a result of this project, and we're now moving forward with the next phase, which will be conversion of the PSNE-owned lights. Let's have a few more slides to go. Talk a little bit about funding. It is a six-year plan, and as I mentioned earlier, the first year is fully funded. You see the city funds at the very bottom in blue. Green represents the grant funding and red is the unfunded portions. And as you see, the city funding is fairly consistent over the years. Grant funding goes up and down. We've been very fortunate in, I'll show that a little bit later, where we are on the grant funding, but this gives a snapshot of the unfunded over the six-year period and the local funds and the grants. To zero in a little bit more on the city's funds in particular, we receive about $4.5 million from business license fees, gas tax, impact fees, and then fund balance, which we carry over from the previous year. And this is just a snapshot of one year in 2016. Shows you, we received about 400, $4.5 million in local funding. And the next column over, you'll see where that gets allocated. Quite a bit of it gets allocated towards the corridor projects. These are fairly large projects. We have a large portion allocated to maintenance and preservation, although we're seeing our maintenance and preservation needs go up, so I think over the years, you're probably going to see that box get a little bit bigger over time. And of course, then, non-motorized and safety and other, or the other categories where we spend some of the city resources. This is the one I wanted to talk to you about, a little bit about the leveraging that we do. Of those city funds of the $4.5 million in 2016, we've leveraged about $10 million in grants. That's either federal or state grants, and that's our goal every year is to keep that up. We'll have an opportunity again to apply for grants this summer with TIB, and then next spring, there'll be another federal call for projects. And my last slide is our recommended action. Staff recommended action is to approve the six-year Transportation Improvement Program for 2016 through 2021, and to present the resolution regarding this matter for reading and adoption, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from council? Any correspondence?
No correspondence, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wanted to address the council on this topic? Hearing none. What's a wish to the council?
We will close the hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Person and seconded by Ms. Palmer that the public hearing be closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And we do have that resolution for this evening, so thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you.
So, council, I will ask you in all seriousness, if you wanted to take a 10-minute or so break to go across the hall, we certainly could do that. It's up to you.
Not much left.
All right, moving on to administrative report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council, a couple of items. We have 80 athletes from the Renton Specialized Recreation Program, along with 15 volunteers and many parents, traveled to the state Special Olympics Tournament at Fort Lewis the weekend of May 30th. Our Masters Five soccer team earned a gold medal, and our junior soccer team earned fourth place. All of the cycling and track athletes earned a medal or ribbon in each of their three events, so we want to congratulate all of our Renton athletes. The City Renton Neighborhood Program will kick off its summer picnic season this week with the South Renton Neighborhood Association's picnic Wednesday, June 17th, beginning at 5:30 PM at Linear Park, which is located 502 Burnett Avenue South. As with all of our picnics, we encourage residents in that neighborhood to bring their favorite food dish to share and attend the picnic to get to know their immediate and surrounding neighbors and meet city representatives. King County Parks is inviting all King County residents, potential trail users, and other interested parties to help plan a new regional trail on the east side. A trail in the east side rail corridor from Renton to Woodenville and from Woodenville to Redmond will serve the non-motorized transportation needs, provide recreational opportunities, and connect communities. People in the Renton area are invited to participate in the planning process at a community meeting Tuesday, June 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Talbot Hill Elementary School. For more information, they can get on King County's website, and they'll have information there, or they can call us. We have always a number of transportation maintenance projects in the works this summer and tried to highlight some of those, just a few to let folks know. We're continuing to work on the old Benson Road this week, and so folks just need to be aware of that. We'll have flaggers out. And we'll be conducting some sewer line maintenance next week, from June 22nd to the 26th, along the shoreline of Lake Washington, between the south end of the lake up to the 4,000 block of Lake Washington Boulevard. So, folks just need to be aware that's coming up. We also have other projects around the city. For the most part, we do single lane closures and we get, try to get information out there for folks. We just encourage people to be careful when they drive and watch for people in the roadway. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have nobody signed up for audience comments, so moving on to consent agenda, we have five items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member liked polled for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll item B.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that we approve the consent agenda minus item B.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council approve the consent agenda minus item B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, B is the Community Services Department recommends an approval of a addendum, actually just an additional year to an existing contract for on-call emergency contractor, and I, they've done a great job for two years, so I can't imagine they wouldn't do it for the third year, so there, in that case, I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Community Services Committee and allow the mayor to sign this contract.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with item B for city signature. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The committee, committee as a whole has a committee report.
Committee as a whole, committee report, turnback of State Route 900 and State Route 515. The committee as a whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to the Washington State Department of Transportation requesting turnback of State Route 900 and State Route 515 within the central business district, as shown in Figure A, which was the map we saw earlier. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that the council concur with the committee as a whole committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Palmer, that council concur with the committee as a whole report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
No. Old business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
I have one committee report. I have one committee report.
Transportation Aviation Committee report. Two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, six-year Transportation Improvement Plan update. The Transportation Aviation Committee reviewed the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-one six-year Transportation Improvement Plan and recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the annual updates to the TIP. The committee further recommends that the resolution be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer?
I move that council concur with the committee report. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Transportation Committee report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Pavoni?
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have one resolution.
A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, updating Renton's six-year Transportation Improvement Program for two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Palmer?
I move the resolution be adopted as read. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Ms. Perez, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business. Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a committee of the whole committee meeting on Monday, June twenty-second, six PM, in the council, in the conference area, excuse me. We have two items on the agenda, design layout, changes for the council agenda minutes and agenda bills, and regional issues. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Person?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Palmer?
No new business.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, announcing for council member Corman, the Planning and Development Committee will meet on June twenty-second at five thirty. There'll be one issue. It'll be two thousand and fifteen Comprehensive Business, Comprehensive Plan briefing.
And that'll be in the council conference room, right?
In the council conference room, yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Perez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Community Service Committee that would have taken place on June twenty-second will be canceled. And announcing for council member Taylor, the Utilities Committee that would have taken place on June twenty-second also will be canceled.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to audience comments. Anybody want to address the council?
Just a brief announcement. Next Monday morning at seven thirty, we're going to have a little thing over at the community center where we're just sharing some of the things we have for our Center of Hope, the things that we're doing down there. It's a little breakfast. We'd love to have you come and enjoy it with us. That's at seven thirty next Monday at the community center. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard. Would you just put, give your name over the air so it goes into the recorder?
Howard McComber, live in the city of Renton.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
I just wrote it down. Good evening. For record, my name's David Della. I live in Seattle with Waste Management. I just want to let you know that this morning, all of you got an invitation last week to present the check to the Talbot Hill Elementary School Microsociety for a green garden project. This was brought forth by Keep America Beautiful, which is a national organization promoting cleanliness and waste management. And this is a national organization that draws thousands of applicants yearly to apply for Think Green Grants. And out of the state of Washington, only one application got the award, and that was the Talbot Hill Elementary. So this morning, we were able to present an enlarged version of this check, which is for five thousand dollars. This will allow the Talbot School Elementary to start work on their green garden and eventually build a greenhouse in front of the school. And it'll be for the use of the Microsociety students, about twenty of them, that are doing recycling and composting. And the four hundred and eighty students in the school and the community at large will have access to the garden. So we were proud to present this check to them and really are proud of Talbot Hill Elementary School and the work that they're doing for green garden and for the environment as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you, David, and thanks for your generosity. That's a great program up there, and they'll make good use of that. So thank you. A wish to the council?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.